Best judge I've ever seen.
Yeah.
I don't even care, she's got her job.
App ready?
She does for us and for Frederick.
All right.
Oh, she does?
First, I need to close out the city council workshop. We went into executive session and we have no action to report. Now, I'm going to go ahead and open the Curville City Council meeting for October 28, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Place One, Delane Seigerman.
Very excited to pray today, so let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the recent rain, which began in the early hours of Saturday morning, and miraculously finished by 5:00 a.m. Saturday morning, leaving beautiful temperatures and clean air with a hint of fall to welcome in our first annual Water Street Festival in downtown Curville. Bless all the folks who helped make that happen, beginning with the city of Curville, our many sponsors, the vendors, and all the citizens who came out to enjoy it. Watch over our first responders, our police, our firefighters, our nurses, our doctors, our city leaders, who will meet tonight, plan, decide, vote on important issues that will shape our city and surrounding area going into the future. Please be with those who are still in need of assistance and closure, and that you will guide us to possibly find answers for these folks. In all of these things, I ask in the name of your Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice alone.
Thank you, Mayor. Like I said at our last meeting, we're in that time of year where we have a lot going on. Last Thursday, we had art in the park. We had a good turnout for that. And then Councilman Seigerman just talked about, we had the Water Street Festival on Saturday. I want to give you kudos and all your group. It was a great turnout. It was great to see a lot of people downtown, so thank you very much for spearheading that. All right, going on, we've talked about this for several weeks, but it is this Friday, Family Fright Night starts at 5:30 Louise Hayes Park. We encourage everybody to come on out. There will be costumes, candy, lots of fun. You can see some of the costumes there, but I can guarantee you, there's a whole lot more, and it's a fun time to go out there and watch all the great creative ideas that show up. So come on out and join us. Curville Cruisin' Car Show will be our next event. That is going to be November 15th. That's a Saturday. It'll be 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Sports Complex. These aren't classic cars like you see around the courthouse shows, so these are souped-up classic cars. So come on out. This is a free event, and you can actually come. If you have a classic car, you don't have to register ahead of time. Just come on out and join the crowd. Good time there, too. Then, a week after that, November the 22nd, that's the big event for our downtown, the Holiday Lighted Parade, and that's going to start at 6:00 p.m. How many have been to the Holiday Lighted Parade? Okay, then I don't really need to push how great of an event it is, but big turnout every year. It's great for our businesses downtown, and of course, I think we have 96 floats signed up this year, so it'll be another fun, fun event. Come on out and join them. And then after that, Running Home for the Holidays, 5K, is December 6th. These are all week after week after week. Dress up in holiday attire, come out and join us. That is at 3:00 p.m. on the River Trail, and you need to register for that, and that's a great event every year, as you can see some of the costumes there. People show up and run in great costumes and a lot of fun. All right, Parks and Recreation, right now is having a public input survey, which we would love to have everybody take when you get a chance. It's online, 16 questions. It ends November 10th, and it's a chance to express some of your ideas about what you'd like to see as we work to rebuild the park. So be sure and do that. Like I said, November 10th is the last day, so it's coming up. And then just got this one today, the Curville River Trail Cleanup will be November 15th. That's a Saturday, and that's an event between the Upper Guadalupe River Authority and the city of Curville, and we are actually looking for 200-plus volunteers. And we need to register and check in because volunteer hours will be reported to FEMA, which helps us out. That will be from 8:00 a.m. to noon. If you can come out, you need to register ahead of time. Like I said, you can do that online if you go to the city of Curville's website and Facebook pages, and you can find out more. But come on out, that'll be a great event. And then Shelley asked me, always about elections, early voting is underway through Friday of this week. We have 17 constitutional amendments on the ballot, so she wants everybody to show up and do your constitutional duty and vote. And if you can't make it to early voting, then Election Day is next Tuesday, November 4th, so show up for that. And that's it. Turn it over to y'all.
I'm not going to put you on the spot, but you're retiring soon, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is this your last council meeting?
Yes.
Thank you for all you've done for our community.
Thank you very much.
Stuart.
But you can come anytime. We'll still be here.
Fun, just come, tell me this.
Just for fun.
All right, does any council member have an announcement, you think?
The Curville Swap Meet Market Days event is finally happening on November the 1st from 8:00 to 3:00. That's this coming Saturday at the Hill Country Youth Event Center. It'll be scaled back just a little because the EOC is obviously still out there doing important work, but we are on for November the 1st, so come on out and see us.
Also, I want to say a public thank you to Delane Seigerman for her leadership of the Water Street Festival. It was a wonderful event, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Since we won't have a meeting before, on November the 7th at 8:00 in the morning, I would like to invite everybody to come out to the Hill Country Veterans Center at 411 Meadow View and celebrate our veterans. Have breakfast with us, and it's put on by the Rotary Club of Curville, and it's a great event, and been happening since 2017, so if y'all would like to come out for that. The other thing is also, if you would like to come be recognized at Tybee High School, they are doing their Veterans Day program again this year at 1:00, and it is a remarkable ceremony. So please, veterans, come out, be recognized. And also, John, thank you for putting in the Daily Times to honor a veteran as well, so that means a lot to vets, so thank you all.
Anything else? I know some leadership Kerr County people here. What class number is this? Oh, we just missed it. The best class was number five.
Number six.
I mean, I was a lot younger. All right, we're going to have some recognition, so let's start with the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. Let's see, we have two people here. Come up front. You know, it's something is good when community members volunteer their time to help their community, and I'm thankful for that. You're Shakur County, take note, we want you to be on commissions and boards, you have to apply. Let me read these. One's to Fred and one's to Catherine. So Fred Gamble and Catherine Howard have served as original members of the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, TRZ, T-I-R-Z, number one board, since the date of the board's inception, with service beginning August 2020 during COVID. Whereas Fred and Catherine have served faithfully and dutifully on said board, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Curville, Kerr County, Texas, that be recognized for their outstanding service as a member of the charter of the commission. And on behalf of Susan Curville, as well as ourselves individually, to express our sincere appreciation for their contributions, and it's signed by every member of the council. So here's yours, Fred, and here's yours, Catherine.
Thank you.
What I would like, is okay, is for you to say your name and what you learned serving on this board.
Oh goodness, I'm Catherine Howard Thompson. I think the reason this has never been updated is because my name tag here says Catherine Howard, so we just leave it as it is. Goodness, I learned so much, and I always do, serving on boards in our community, which I do recommend to anybody, apply, because not only do you learn so much about the inner workings of your city and city staff, and what these people do every day, but I feel like you learn a lot about yourself and what's important to you. For me, of course sidewalks, accessibility, walkability, and the best way to be heard is to show up to those meetings and speak, to apply for those boards and those committees, and stay involved. So I keep learning that, as being involved is the best way to, you know, contribute to your community.
Thank you. Fred?
As far as what I learned, it just reinforced something I already do, that working with the citizens here in Curville is just a joy, and there's just so many dedicated people who show up at these meetings. TRRZ is not the sexiest thing in the world to be organized, but these people showed up, we did good work, and we, without a doubt, each and every time, I felt like that the other board members would do what was in the best interest of Curville. And that's important, and it's important if I'm going to use my time to be around people that have that kind of dedication, and we definitely do. This is a tremendous community to serve, and I'm thankful for the opportunity.
Thank you. Hold up your certificate. Smile, okay, good, thank you. Next, is municipal court, correct? That's correct?
Paramedic.
Paramedic. I know it's you.
Making their way in.
Sure they're making their way in.
There they are.
Here they are. Timing is really good.
All right, so I am honored tonight to recognize Michelle Prescott, Celebrating the San Antonio Spurs Leaders and Legacies Honoree for her dedication, compassion, and leadership during the July flood. Michelle's a paramedic with the Curville Fire Department, bringing over 15 years' experience in emergency medical services and EMS education. Her career has been devoted to training and mentoring providers, but her leadership was most profoundly tested during the catastrophic Kerr County floods. In the Emergency Operations Center, Michelle helped coordinate the reunification line for the families desperately searching for loved ones, while also supporting her department, the city, and international response agencies. Her compassion and empathy helped guide the community through one of its darkest moments. Michelle's dedication to service, her strength in crisis, and her ongoing commitment to resilience and recovery reflect the very best of her profession and community leadership. Her award also gave her a noted a steady presence of courage during the Hill Country floods exemplify the very spirit of leaders and legacies. Quiet professionalism, compassion, unwavering commitment to safeguarding life when it matters most. We are deeply grateful for the sacrifices you have made as a frontline responder and for the example you continue to set in serving and strengthening your community. Now, I'll embarrass her, because she posted online, and it was so heartfelt, I have to read it tonight. After receiving the award, Michelle posted, "I am truly humbled to receive the San Antonio Spurs Leaders and Legacies Award for my role during the Fourth of July floods. That day tested every ounce of strength and resolve our community had, and while I'm honored by this recognition, my heart remains with the families forever changed and those who continue to carry the weight of that tragedy. This honor belongs to everyone who stood shoulder to shoulder in the darkest hours and to a community that continues to show incredible strength and resilience and love. Thank you for the Spurs for lifting up our story and reminding us that their greatest legacy will always be the compassion and unity that carried us through. As fire chief, I am proud to recognize Michelle and grateful to work along her side during the EOC, myself and Chief McCall. She served as Situation Unit Leader and Specialist for the duration of the Unified Command at the EOC, and there was not a task too small or too big, and is a true testament of teamwork." These are a few of the examples of her dedication, compassion, and leadership that earned her the Spurs Leaders and Legacy Honoree. So, thank you.
We're all here to support, so.
I'm just honored to have this award. They recognize that I was here for the community, not for myself, and that means a lot.
It does mean a lot. Thank you. Let's go down the line and introduce yourself and tell us how long you've been with the board.
Stephen Boyd, Deputy Chief, been here 23 years.
Mark Blue, HSA Battalion Chief, 29 years.
Angelino, been here for five years.
Mike Booth, I've been a City of Curville employee for 19 years.
Lieutenant.
24 years.
Dustin Lewis, I've been here for two years.
Twenty-eight years.
Congratulations.
Oh, me.
And the cops, I'm sorry.
Oh, that one, that one too.
Look at that picture.
Oh, okay.
He keeps moving now, they keep going.
At least we'll be in chief's lap.
Thank you.
Come on. All right, next is municipal courts, come on up. This is a proclamation of the city of Curville. Whereas municipal courts are state courts and play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, and whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court, and whereas the city of Curville has hosted the municipal court since 1942, and whereas the city of Curville is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and partiality of the judiciary. Whereas the city council recognizes that the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Curville Municipal Court in applying with such legal requirements. Now therefore, I, Jareng Jr., Mayor of the city of Curville, should hereby proclaim the week of November 3 through 7 of 2025 as municipal court. So congratulations. Introduce yourself and tell us your impressions of working in municipal court.
Ooh, Tanya, ooh, so ready.
I wanted you first.
Okay, 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 okay. Well, I'm Lucy Pearson, I'm the judge for municipal court, and I love municipal courts so much, I love coming to work, I love working with all of the people that I work with, but I love seeing all the defendants, too. Even when they're sad and crying and unhappy, we can help them through those moments when other courts can't do that. We have the option to do that, and I always love when they can go to the front window and see our smiling faces, and even, we had a trial this week, and somebody was not happy with the decision, but I made sure they walked out with a smile on their face, so.
Yes, Tanya, I'm the court administrator, and I enjoy working for the court. Like the judge said, we get to help people out. They may not know what to expect when they come in, and one of the things that I appreciate is just helping them, walking them through the process of taking care of their business and giving them all the information that they need and knowing that we help.
Okay, so my name is Tanya, I'm a deputy court clerk, and I really enjoy working for the Curville Municipal Court, because as Yesenia said, sometimes a lot of people walk into our doors and they're clueless, but that's what we're there for, we're there to guide
them and help them and hopefully help them walk out with a smile on their face, so always glad to do that.
Marshall?
Nelson Spittler, I'm the city marshal pilot for the court. Served the warrants, nobody likes to see me, nobody. But, you know, we help them, I mean, there's other ways to take care of things than having them go to jail, and that's why we try to work with them, to work through their issues, to get them in compliance, and it's not about punishment, it's about compliance and justice.
I understand you have a new court that's going to open up, new building.
Yes.
It's okay, you think it's going to be a good upgrade?
Absolutely.
Oh my gosh, it's great. The new public safety facility includes the municipal court, and it's a lovely chamber. I'm really proud of all of the people. Here, let's get a picture. Hold that up.
Tomorrow.
Is it?
Mike's taking me tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, we've come to the visitor and citizen forum. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir, we have four. Roger Mead.
Mr. Mead? Come on up, please.
Hi. Hi.
No, no.
Hi.
I'm a veteran, I was saying, that's helping vets. Yes. And we've seen you helping not just community, veterans, and everybody under you in this area. Pretty lady right there, I believe you know.
I do.
She one of the artists here in Curville.
Yes.
She did this painting, my wife saw it, and she thought it would be appropos for you, especially after a disaster on July 4th, so we'd like to present this to you.
Thank you. So lovely.
As our token of appreciation.
Thank you, thank you very kindly. I would show it to you, but no. Isn't it lovely?
Thank you, you have more of my paintings, not only this, you have more.
Thank you so much, you're very kind.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Between the leads.
Gabriel Peralas?
Judge, pardon me, Mayor, council members.
The judge just left.
I apologize, and I should have done this earlier when I presented Tana, but I'd really like for Tana to present herself, and she can go over the SBA program and the news that she has for us, and so I just thought I'd give her this opportunity to take her first leap of faith here and let everybody know who might be hearing it for the first time about SBA and our disaster loan program.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you so much, Gabe. I am Tana Moorhead, I am from Houston, Texas, so I am a fellow Texan. I am serving with SBA, Small Business Administration, and the Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. Our program encompasses disaster loans for survivors, disaster survivors, which include homeowners, renters, and small business owners. Each of those components has their own individual application process, and prior to this role, I worked in Disaster Recovery Center, assisting survivors, you know, with submitting loan applications. In this role, I'm excited to be in because I get to help and be the face of the agency and help more of the community. For each of the programs, the disaster loan programs for the home, we do have our loan limits that are for homes, it's $500,000, for personal property, it's $100,000, for businesses and nonprofits, it's $2 million. So what's so fabulous about the program is that in our efforts to help survivors, there is zero interest and zero payment for the very first year. So any of our survivors who are concerned about taking on, you know, any financial obligations, that is our assurance that we are helping our survivors get back on their feet to help them recover, repair, and replace any damaged property. We have customer service that are available anytime that we have our centers, our staff, our field staff out, we have our customer service information available on our website where any of survivors can visit that website and get the information that they need so they can get the help that they need. I appreciate and thank you for your time and for the information that you've allowed me to share, and my time is up. Thank you for yours.
Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Oh, any questions?
I know that the deadline has moved.
Yes.
What is the new deadline?
November 27th for the disaster declaration for Kerr County. With our new rule declaration, our disaster deadline, I believe, is November 14th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Curville, thank you.
Thank you.
Louis Amstoy?
No, let's skip that one.
Well, I just wanted to say, Louis Amstoy, 314 Rock Ridge, Curville, I want to say that Stuart Cunius has done a great job of representing the city and working with the media. I don't think any of us in this room who's worked with him on a regular basis would disagree with that. You're new, but, yeah, I mean, Stuart's really going to be a big loss, and, oh, you're here now, thank you. Stuart, thank you for all that you've done, and I know you're going to be around, so we'll see you and bother you all the time, and you've just done such an important job for this community, especially over the last few months. Thank you for what you've done.
I appreciate it.
Jenny Staton?
Staton, whichever one you care to use.
Hi, I'm Jenny Staton. I'm a resident here in Curville, I moved here in 2016, and I've been working here in mental health for about nine years, my Bachelor of Art is in psychology, but I appreciated when I noticed in the, I guess, part of the proposal that I had seen for the new parks, with one of the new amenities, I noticed that they mentioned it being sensory friendly, so that stood out to me. So not just as a mental health professional, but as somebody that also has an ASD or autism spectrum diagnosis, I appreciated that sensory friendliness was being considered. So with that in mind, I guess, a priority for me that I wanted to share as someone who's part of that community of, you know, neurodiverse individuals, so with the restoration of the parks, I know that there's, you know, excitement about potential for new amenities, but as far as with sensory friendliness, I just wanted to share my personal priority, and I know one that's shared by some others, you know, not just with them, we don't just care about amenities, we also care about the trees and all of the vegetation, which has been, you know, suffered so much since the July 4th event, so if it comes to... So if it comes to, you know, money going this way or that way, restoring some of the more densely, you know, previously densely vegetated areas, I think is important as far as sensory-friendliness. It really helps with dampening the sounds of the city, which, when you get to, I love the park and that there's the different amenities, but having the more dense vegetation where it has been or where it could be, to sort of separate some of that out and help, you know, instead of having too many concrete amenities smushed up together, making sure to leave, or potentially put some money to restoring some of the more dense vegetation is a priority that I have personally, that I just wanted to share. So, you know, because I, like I said, I appreciate, you know, seeing sensory-friendliness being considered and accessibility. And, you know, I think sometimes people don't think about that as far as, you know, dense vegetation potentially being part of accessibility, but for part of the population, that is something that does make a difference for us. Another thing with the dog park, it looked like there was someone, Kayla White, I believe, has already been, you know, in communication with, I think, one of the city council members about some amenities that are important to us at the dog parks. So one thing that I was a little bit concerned about, I couldn't really tell from the post-map, was the difference in size compared to the previous dog park. Because, so for those of us that work here in town and get off at, you know, five or six, it gets pretty busy around those times. And so it's, I think it's important for us to have a good chunk of land like it has been, you know, because we, you know, so many of us just let clockwork every day after work, go out to that park. And having space to spread out, I think, is important for safety for the dogs and for people, too. You know, not everybody wants to be in a dense, confined little space. So I know I'm running out of time, but I appreciate all of the work that everybody is already doing as far as with preserving and restoring as much as possible the trees and vegetation and with continued, you know, thoughts towards accessibility with the amenities of the new parks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to reassure you, trees are important, guys, too. But thank you for sharing that. Who's next?
George Broody.
Okay. Anybody else?
That's it, sir.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We do have an ordinance to read in first. Before that, any item on this consent agenda can be removed by a council member, staff member, or member of the public. Does anybody have anything they would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. 4C.
4C. Anybody else? All right. Let's go ahead and read in 4A. Shall we?
Ordinance number 2025-24, second reading, an ordinance in chapter 30, Businesses of the City's Code of Ordinances, by admitting several sections within Article 1, group homes and boarding home facilities, to include adding recovery house to the types of group homes required to be registered with the city and consequently exempted from the regulations provided in this chapter, clarifying the provision of fees, reducing the distance requirement between boarding home facilities, and providing of the matters laid to the subject. This ordinance was approved unanimously on October 14, 2025.
Thank you. I have a motion then on the consent agenda other than 4C.
I'll move to approve consent agenda items 4A, 4B, 4D, 4E, and 4F.
There's seconds.
Second.
There's several seconds.
He can have it.
Key discussion. All those in favor, so vote, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. 4C. Who is going to present for us? Ms. Hagman?
Hello again, counsel. Today, I will be presenting to you the opportunity to invest in the businesses through an exterior enhancement grant program. A little bit of background regarding the tax invest, sorry, tax increment reinvestment zone, that's what that should say. The TERS number one, they were created to make recommendations to the council concerning administration, management, and operations. TERS 1 has recommended the development and funding of exterior enhancement grant programs designed to encourage visual improvements and enhancement of publicly visible areas of commercial, professional, and retail properties within its respective boundaries. Just a little bit about tax increment and Chapter 11s. This is financing redirection of property taxes in a geographic area, which has been defined by this TERS number one, to pay for improvements within the zone. And at this time, the TERS number one has a little over $1 million in that fund. And once you back out some commitments that they already have, they would have around $900,000 in that account before taking in this additional request. So then, the purpose is to improve and enhance the business face signage, landscaping, parking lots, and other publicly visible areas. The overview is, in an effort to improve curb appeal, the funding would be through TERS number one. They approve for an allocation of $50,000 with a matching reimbursement grant up to $5,000 per applicant. And either the property owner or the business owner, the tenant, are eligible for funding. This is a map of TERS number one. In the program criteria, applicants will be reviewed for a, by a grant committee, which will evaluate each project on a case-by-case basis, and they will need to begin the project within 90 days of their approval. And then here we have what the assessment standards would be. And so professional quality, consistency of design, what, how sufficient are the improvements? And then the improvement of the property will significantly impact the revitalization. The reimbursement process, so upon approval, the applicant will need to obtain a permit, if that is required, for what they are applying for. Once the project is completed, the applicant will submit final documentation and then proof of payment. And they will work directly with the finance department for that. Qualifying projects, painting, cleaning, tuck pointing, facade and window repair and replacement, doorway, lighting, signage, window tinting, awning repair, permanent landscaping, parking lot improvements, and dumpster enclosures. Eligible projects will be any project that work has already begun, been completed, or has a current valid permit. So then the application process. There will be an online application, and I'm so sorry, I was not able to get that between the workshop and now, we weren't able to get that up, but I will send that out to you all so that you can see that. But the information that they will submit through this application, this online application, is the applicant's name, the property owner's contact information, the address for the project, photos of the existing structures, and the area of which they wish to improve, with a description or outline or illustration of the proposed improvements. And then the itemized written work estimate, which that is what the committee, if that program is chosen, that written work estimate is what we will base the funding on. So it will be matching. So if it's a $10,000 project, the committee can award up to $5,000, which is the max. But if it's a $3,000 project, we can award up to $1,500. So then, today, you will, so before you now is the policy and grant agreement. So the policy goes through why we're doing this, about promotion and retention of high-quality development, an effort to improve curb appeal, that the grant funding is pursuant to the program on a case-by-case basis, up to $5,000. And each applicant is approved by funding will agree to all the terms of the program. The program requirements being within TERS number one, exterior, public-facing project, proof of property ownership, or a letter from the property owner approving the project, must start construction within 90 days and complete it within one year of approval, submitting the application in a timely manner. And awards will not be funded to any project that has already begun or has been completed and/or has a valid permit. So in the conversation with TERS, short-term rentals are not included as a business. This is a decision based off of state codes and other discussions that were made that short-term rentals are considered residential. So they would not be, they would not be able to apply for this particular grant. But as we talked about in the workshop, I feel like this is a great opportunity, first step, to support our businesses and to also listen to the other businesses and other entities within the TERS to see what other projects they're interested in potentially having some grant program funding. And then required use, there was also a clarification there that if someone currently has a piece of property within the TERS and they want to apply for this grant, but they don't currently have a business there, that within the one year, if they are able to increase, bolster, and convert the improvement into a marketable property so that they can get a business into there. So we are hoping to open up this application early November. Application deadline will be January 16th. Grant notification will be early to mid-February. And we are requesting $50,000 from TERS number one. Here are some examples of other cities that have done exterior enhancement grants and what they have looked like. Any questions?
The council did have a workshop on this earlier, so some of the questions have been asked already. But let's start. Elaine, you have any questions?
I asked about the application, when can we see that? And it sounds like to me it's going to be a simple application, it doesn't sound intimidating. So I was really happy to hear about that. And I think you have some other questions from some other council members or comments.
Jeff?
I would like to see short-term rentals included in this because they are a commercial property. They pay hot taxes. You're in the TERS, you're paying your portion into it, and if you turn around and pay in hot tax, they should be included. That's just, I think, that's kind of a consensus. I can't speak for counsel, but I think, you know, it is considered a commercial property. So that's my statement. Thank you.
So is TERS restricted from doing residential properties?
No, there's nothing that I believe that restricts TERS from doing.
Well, this program, the TERS, is not restricted from doing.
We would just have to add that in. It was in the initial conversations regarding business and exterior. That was a conversation that had had before, that because of the way that short-term rentals are utilized, having to be paid for upfront, that they did not qualify with it.
Well, I kind of buy into that thinking myself. But I think it's a good point, though, that everybody, residential included, is paying into the TERS. And we ought to come up with a program for residential properties, which would include the short-term rentals and really address the short-term rentals in that manner rather than mix it in with this bunch. So we create another pot of money. I don't know what kind of percentage of residential property is within the TERS area, but to come up with something similar, it also gives some payback to, you know, the residential side.
Yeah. Kelly, you mentioned that there was already some money committed elsewhere. Can you talk about that?
I'm sure someone, I can't remember what, that $100,000, that's already been committed at TERS.
Sure. Oh, is that the block?
Oh, yes, sorry. The city did apply for a grant for sidewalks, and the TERS board was going to fund that matching program, or the match to that program. But I don't believe that we've heard if we were eligible for that, or awarded that grant. So they're holding that money for a matching grant if we are awarded it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because I think, as we spoke about in the workshop, the TERS 1 encompasses about 440 acres. That includes not only businesses and residential property. And I know that this is just the, kind of the first stab at getting a little bit of money out there to benefit those who have put into the TERS. So I'm hoping that the next project might include some of the residential properties that also have invested money in the TERS. So that's just my comment.
I wonder if the sidewalks were one of the things that up the residents that are in.
Well, you know, and here's the thing, if you, and correct me if I'm wrong, Drew, but if you buy a piece of property in the TERS and it's a residence, and you, and let's say it's blighted and you're going to completely redo it, doesn't the ordinance say you have to put a sidewalk in front of your house?
New construction would require a sidewalk.
Okay, so would a residence be able to apply for a matching $5,000 grant to put that sidewalk in front of his house?
Not through this program.
Yeah, not through this program, but if we did create a new program.
Yes. Yeah, through a residential program. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
We got two that are interested in residential programs.
Excuse me. All right, counsel, I'm trying to figure out what y'all want to do next. I think what I'm hearing is we would like to suggest to the TERS board additional programs in the future. I think I'm hearing that, correct? I'm also hearing at least one council member saying, I think short-term rentals should be included in this program. All right? Is that a fair statement?
So, Mayor, counsel, I will, you know, on the short-term rental piece, I definitely think we could add it. And I think, you know, with this program, I would just use caution on this particular one, it would likely have to go back to the TERS board, you know, based off of that conversation. However, something also to consider on the short-term rental, we are going to want to see a lot more requirements in there. Because if somebody has a short-term rental, then they apply for it, and then they move it back to their residential property, or primary residence, or even a vacation home, without that program. So I think we want to loop some of these or combine some of these different programs under different categories. Or it could get complicated. The other thing we can even do is, as the applications and stuff come in, and when we hit the deadline, if we didn't have a lot of applications that would fall into the $50,000, we potentially could go back to the board and say, hey, look, we have a tranche of funding in here that's already, you know, here, we would like to open it up for other categories and get some of those criterias, which would then give them a couple months to be able to potentially add some parameters within the current funding.
I would be curious to know the sidewalks that were looked at doing and how much of that have we accomplished? Are we still have, is that 50% of the need for sidewalks that's in the TERS? In the TERS, if you walk from San Francisco-Lemus to G Street, there's a lot of missing sidewalks.
I'll let you talk more about the sidewalks.
I just like sidewalks.
So the grant that we applied for was actually through the Community Development Block Grant.
Okay.
So it's limited to the Main Street boundary. So we were focusing, we have to focus that grant within the Main Street boundary, not the larger TERS boundary.
So is that the cultural district map?
No, it's a different map.
That core downtown map, right?
Right.
Okay.
Different map is defined by the state when we joined the Main Street program.
Okay.
Yeah, we have multiple boundaries in this area for different purposes, but those projects were limited to that boundary, not the greater TERS, so.
Okay.
Don't sit down, Drew. Sorry. It's been a while since I was on P and Z, but did we change zonings on the STRs? Did they go from?
Yes.
Are one, are they, are they zoned commercial now?
No, they're still allowed in residential districts, in the RT district, R1A district, downtown arts and culture and mixed use.
I just, thank you.
I think what I'm hearing from staff and, and from council is here's a program to I think what staff is hearing from council is we would like to see additional programs meeting other needs that are not addressed by this program. You know, a lot about economic development seems to be trying to attract someone from out of town to come here and bring jobs or increase our sales tax. But a lot of economic development isn't really focused on the businesses that are here that have been playing by the rules, have been opening up every day, have been hiring people and trying to take care of their customers. What this does is a first, first attempt. It's a first experimental attempt and we'll find out fairly quickly whether it's successful. I hear both sides of the argument on short-term rentals. I'm okay to try this experiment as it is presented in the hopes that it'll come back to us, other programs will come back to us. All right? I may be the only one that feels that way. So what I would entertain is a motion either to accept this or to send it back because we can't just change it on the fly. It has to go back to the TERS board.
Well, it takes time, you know, that's the thing. You know, we have one more council meeting after this and the end of the year. You know, I've been waiting for us to do something with that money for years. So I'm almost kind of with you, Joe. I agree with the idea of making sure we include that later maybe, but let's see how many we flush out with just what we have.
I certainly respect your opinion, I do. But if there's a motion then to be made, either to approve this program, this grant program as presented or to send it back because we cannot.
Wouldn't make a motion to, that we approve this grant program with the EIC and KEDC.
Oh, it's right above that.
But I'm on the wrong line.
Or C.
Or C. Exterior enhancement grant program, excuse me.
So you're, you're making a motion to approve it as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Good discussion. Jeff?
As a caveat, we can't approve these programs of this.
TERS has a workshop planned for December 2nd, I think it is, and I know, I believe that they were looking for other boards to also be in on that so that they can talk about what their purpose is, how they can use their funding. And so I think that would be a perfect conversation for that workshop.
So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? I'm going to ask a special personal favor to you and your crew. We need updates on this.
Okay.
How it's working, how many applications we got, and eventually how much money has been distributed to small businesses if it passes, and I think it might. So motion's made, a second discussion. Any further discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, you've got your work cut out for you.
Yeah.
Well, you already have your work cut out. Next item is 5A, ordinance number 202523. Would you mind reading that in for us?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2025-23, second reading. An ordinance designating a geographical area within the corporate limits of the city as a reinvestment zone pursuant to chapter 311 of the Texas tax code to be known as tax increment reinvestment zone number three, City of Kerrville, Texas, describing the boundaries of the zone, creating a board of directors for the zone, establishing a tax increment fund for the zone, containing findings related to the creation of the zone, providing a date for the termination of the zone, providing that the zone take effect immediately upon passage of the ordinance, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. On October 14th, 2025, this ordinance was unanimously approved on first reading and we do have two citizen speakers sign up.
Thank you. Let's go to Mr. Hornis first.
Mayor and members of council, this is a second reading. This is the Whiskey Springs development that is on the corner of I-10 and Highway 16. We have some of the members of the development team here, Mr. Jim Boydin from Whiskey Springs, Pablo Brinkman, and Mike Welborn here. Good to see you. And so pending any questions, staff is, I don't have a new report to give you, but I could provide any, any answers to any questions, Jeff, sir.
You could make something up for us.
All right, well, hey, it's me, so I could.
All right, any questions of Mr. Hornis before the citizen speakers? All right, who's the first?
George Burdi.
Mr. Burdi.
Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. So I guess just to talk about a couple of, I'll just call them myths that have been put out about it. Number one, the development would not happen but for the TERS. On two separate public occasions, the developer has said otherwise. First one was when they came in to get the zoning of the public, whatever it's called, PDD, the development district, a couple of years ago. They said the zoning's all good, we're moving forward, here's the project, we have no ask. So then the second one was a couple of months ago, after council meeting, one of the developers, the lead guy, I don't know his name, I forget his name, talked with me outside and is real nice about it. I mean, he came up to me and asked me, you know, conversation, that was, that was great. But in the conversation, he pointed out that number one, they didn't ask for the TERS, the city was the one asking for it. And number two, if they didn't have the TERS, they'd still do the development, it just would be phased a little differently. And so like I say, two occasions, TERS isn't making it happen. It's, it's basically just, it's not part of that. The second is this development will be a net financial benefit to the city. Now, I know you did the calculation last time and there's all kinds of revenue information in the packet, but not one ounce of estimate on the cost of this to the services and, in the city. And based on numbers that you can extract yourself, obviously I've already pulled some out, we know, we got confirmed the other day at the resilience committee meeting that as I've been saying all along, fire and police protection grows correspondingly with the population. Their standards are set to increase the number of officers needed or firefighters needed and vehicles needed to service that many people. So as we grow, we're increasing the cost to our most expensive part of our budget. What that is, I've never heard anybody ask. We should be having the estimate. Nobody can make the statement that it's a net positive without at least producing the numbers. And since it's not there, you've also got the, you know that in the last five, six years, populations grown 5%, which is coincidentally what this development is likely to increase the population by. And in six years, the government spending has grown 60%. That equated to about 16 or, well, it equates to about 20 million right now. So in six, I mean, you can do this, you can't dispute it because there's no other evidence to dispute it with, which nobody's asked about. So myth number two, it's a net financial benefit. It's unknowable at this point. Myth three, it's performance-based agreement. The one producing, if you want to call property tax a produce, a product, the developer isn't the one producing the product. The person that owns the property is producing the product. We are basically giving the tax money back to the developer and the developer is providing a performance of building property and they're being paid by the buyer. That's how they're getting paid. And so when they build the infrastructure, they price it accordingly. So that's another one. The last myth is, is this notion that it's not a subsidy or a giveaway. There's no other way to look at it. The developer comes in and builds a product and they're selling their properties to buyers at full price and the end result is they get money back to them, reimbursing them for cost of doing business. But straight up, it's a subsidy and so these are million-dollar properties, makes no sense.
Pablo Brinkman.
Mr. Brinkman.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Do you have a response?
I, I can to Mr. Burdi's question, the same question that he asked last week or two weeks ago. So there are a lot of different ways that you can review that, analyze that. This, these are all interesting numbers, right? So one of the things that we talked about is how big is that area, right? That area represents about 5% of the land in Kerrville, right? So we look through, how many employees are we going to need to kind of cover that? What departments are we going to need to cover that? I don't need to increase park staff because of this new development. I don't need to increase library staff because of this new development. But we do need to increase public safety staff, which is PD, fire, EMS and public works, engineering, sanitation, those key departments, right? So we have about just under 190 of those within the general fund. So I'd need at full bill out nine and a half employees, say 10. Public safety represents and public works represents about 26, 26.3, 26.4 million dollars in the general fund budget. So per employee, that's all, everything combined, their health insurance, tools, equipment, the rest of it's about $140,000. We're not paying everybody $140,000 cash, that's all of their benefit package and everything that goes into that. So if I was going to add nine and a half employees to cover this, right now that would cost 1.3, 1.325 million dollars. But I'm talking about 10 years from now because it is kind of complicated, you know? We, we're adding value every year, right? What happens to that value? Well, the next year, you don't get to add that value as new value, right? It's absorbed in. But assuming a 4% rate over 10 years, it's going to be about 1.9 million dollars needed for those nine and a half employees. Based on the estimates, and again, these are estimates, in 10 years, that development, 100% of that increment will give us 4.2 million dollars. But we need 1.9, call it 2, million dollars for those employees to cover that. Our increment at 70% will cover 3 million dollars, right about. So about 150% of what we need, we will have based on estimates, granted, they're all estimates. We don't know exactly where all that's going to shake out. We don't know exactly where all the tax rates are going to be. We can't say for certain what the valuations are. So some of these are run on estimates, but I could feel confident coming to you saying that this is going to bring you 150% of what you need based on today's conditions. And I, I should have had something like that in the last packet. George is not wrong. I should, we should provide that for you, so.
Mr. Brinkman.
Pablo Brinkman, 3928 Park Drive, Mayor Herring, members of council, thank you all for the time today. I only had one add, certainly no nits. Beyond this being just residential, it is going to be a lot of commercial and there'll be, with, with all plans, a great amount of sales tax and hot tax. If we're successful in the three hotels, the two rack hotels on Highway 16 and the resort hotels, there's going to be a great deal of, of sales tax beyond just the property tax that's, that's been spoken about so much here of late. So the infrastructure, the difference of this development and other developments that you may or may not be aware of here in Kerrville or our surrounding areas is there's a heavy emphasis on retail and services to offer to all of Kerrville. So that's, I just wanted to bring that of a point. Thank you all.
Any other speakers?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have ordinance before us. We spoke about two weeks ago. Thank you for the additional information, Mr. Hornis.
Yes, sir.
We have questions of staff. Is there a motion then on this ordinance?
I will make the motion to approve ordinance number 2025-20, or excuse me, 2025-23 on second reading.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. And again, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 6A, Mr. Barrera.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So this item here is just requesting approval to submit an application to the Alamo Area Council of Governments. It'll be for $25,000 and it's going to be used towards a household hazardous waste collection event. This won't occur until FY '27. Additionally, we'll have to do a cash match of 5,000 and it is a reimbursable grant and the amount is going to be budgeted in the next budget cycle. Couple of pictures down below that show, show the previous events that we've had. And that's about all I have on this. If you have any questions?
All right, any questions?
As a reimbursable grant, does that mean, how does that work? I guess I, I don't recognize it.
So we'll, we'll pay the expense upfront.
Okay.
And then we'll submit the, a packet to get reimbursed.
That's, we get reimbursed, okay.
You know what that timeline is as far as from the time you pay for it, which is going to be the next year's budget, correct?
Correct.
And then the time it takes to be reimbursed?
It's usually within a month.
Okay.
We haven't had any long-term issues. They're, they're pretty quick.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if I'm understanding this item, you are asking us for approval to apply for a grant?
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions for our staff? Go ahead.
Never mind, I'll just answer it. We were questioning what a binium was.
Bionium.
Bionium.
So two years.
Two years.
All right, I'm sorry.
Learned something we were doing.
Staff is asking for permission to apply for a grant. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move to authorize the staff to submit that application.
Sir, second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Barrera.
Thank you.
Item 7A, looks like Councilman Seegerman has something to say.
All right, so we, we're fortunate enough to receive Kerrville, to receive the cultural district recognition from the state of Texas. This is a Texas Commission on the Arts designation and this will open the doors for opportunities for grants, suggestions on how to use those funds possibly. As a matter of fact, the executive director of this entity was here at the festival Saturday cutting the ribbon where he read this proclamation here to the public. So the first paragraph says, "The Kerrville Cultural District is among the 57 Texas locations to receive official cultural district designation from the state of Texas." Our application was about 60 pages long, I think. I think at one point I showed the video that went with it. So it, it was painstaking hours to put together by quite a few people, myself, Howard Taylor, Catherine Voye, and we were fortunate enough to get it. We will, we have some action items that we must take care of to satisfy the requirements they've given us. One is to create a board and they, they want four of the board members to be, if you have a Main Street program, to be from that board. So I've already started conversing with some folks about putting that together. We will need to, as we apply for grants, the first time we can apply for a grant is June of next year, but we're already looking at some projects and that would be a minimal amount of $5,000. But the next opportunities, which go into January 26, 27, excuse me, would be up to 250,000. So, and anywhere in between, they have other grant opportunities that would be small, medium and large. So we're starting to put together project ideas. I've got a call into Community Foundation to see, because we, we have to have matching funds every time we apply for an amount. There is a, a sum, I mean, there's an opportunity at Community Foundation that a gentleman who put his estate in their care has said he wanted some of his estate funds to be put into beautifying Kerrville, so helping Kerrville and improving the downtown. So we're kind of looking to maybe use that as matching funds for the requests that we hope to make. So y'all have any questions? So, y'all have any questions?
Just one. I was curious how the voting process was to select us.
Oh, well, I may have that in here. It was quite extensive. We, I think there were 70-something applications, it got down to 16 applications, and we were, we actually are one of four that received that accreditation. I apologize, it's in here somewhere, but it was quite extensive, actually. And usually, I was told, since I volunteered to be the chairperson as well, that on the first attempt at this, you don't usually get it, you know? I mean, so.
Was it like voted on by the public, or was it a select?
There's a commission in the state that does this.
Okay. Well, that's quite an honor.
It is, it is. It's a surprising one, because we really.
And this is our first time to apply for that?
Time to apply, and Howard, who's on the Main Street board, he's the chair, was surprised we had not tapped into this before. So, let's see if it says here. "Through a vigorous progress process of peer review, the commission designated four new districts, which are Kerrville, Goval," did I say that right? Couple of other cities that got it. But anyway, yes, it went through a quite vigorous, I think they have a panel of 12, look at this. So, I have more information, if you want to read more about it. You'll probably be hearing more and more and more about it, so.
Thank you. That's good news, and keep us informed.
We will, I will.
Thank you. Awesome. 8A, financial report. Are you ready, Ms. Barrance?
Good afternoon. Yes, I'm ready. So, I will be brief. Just going to give you a high level of general fund and water fund tonight, but I do want to remind you, as I always do in October, it's too early for me to give you year-end numbers, so a lot of things still happening, a lot of bills still being paid in October, and a lot of accruals still happening for revenues. So, this is just a snapshot as of 9:30, and I think also have some flood information just to give you kind of where we are. So, I'll be brief. Yep. I'm going to apologize because I have the wrong presentation. Martin swapped it for me, but, oh, he's switching it right now. I noticed it a minute ago. That's what happens in your hurry. Yours is correct, that's in your packet, just when I loaded it for the, there we go. Okay. Thank you, Martin. So, you'll notice on revenues, we have a total shortfall right now of about $469,000. Most of it, you can tell, is in recreation, so we lost July, August, September revenues at KSP, which is our prime rental timeframe, so that really has hurt us in that area. And we have issued some refunds already that people had booked in fiscal year '25 for future years. So, there's some refunds captured in that, too, and we're seeing quite a few of those. It has slowed down a little bit, but we still expect to see some moving forward. So, we're watching that really closely and working with parks. On the expense side, right now, or as of 9:30, we're 1.4 million better than overall budget, and that's full budget for the year, not an estimate. But keep in mind, we have most of the month of October where we're still paying bills and accumulating some things, and then we have some adjustments that we have to make. So, by this time next month, I'll be able to give you a better picture, but for sure, by December, I'll be able to tell you exactly where we are. It's just too early at this point. On the water side, we're almost net zero, so total revenue better than budget by 182,000, and about the same on expenses. But again, you know, time will tell as we make adjustments over the next few months. Still appears that, you know, our adjustment to reducing dependency on irrigation is working, but we did have a little bit of an impact over, you know, having some severe restrictions there for a month or so, so, which we expected. But again, that'll clean up over the next month, and we'll be able to give you a really hard number there. So, just a quick update on where we are with the flood recovery, so that is forefront on our priority list right now, and I would say capitalizing quite a bit of our time. With that being said, we have tremendous support from FEMA and TIDM, so they're here in our office every week, every Thursday, and meeting with us, and really holding our hand through some processes that we wouldn't, otherwise we would be on our own, or having to, you know, hire some outside oversight, but they've been super good. So, you've seen this before, and again, this is just your two pots of money, just so that everybody understands, and we don't have to cover this necessarily, but I wanted it in the packet, just to update the public on really where the money comes from and how the money flows before our reimbursement actually happens. And then I did another little graph, and I'm not a graphic designer, so this is the way my brain works. But basically, through our processes of damage assessments and really deciding, what do we have, what do we need, what are expenses going to be, we are now starting the procurement process for some of our larger projects, and so we're having to go out for bid, we're having to do some requests for proposals, just depending on what the scope of the project is and those things. We do have a FEMA compliance person who is reviewing all of our things that go out to make sure that we're following federal purchasing guidelines on everything that we're submitting for formal solicitation. So, that's been really helpful, just to have that extra set of eyes to make sure we're not, we're keeping ourselves eligible before the expenses even start. So, FEMA has allocated all of the projects for all of our damages, so they are there. They're waiting on some cost estimates for us. Some of them we provided, some we're still working on. Once FEMA approves those cost estimates, then they will allocate those dollars to TIDM. So, we're probably still a few months away from that on most of our projects, just because of the nature of the process. Once TIDM has those allocations, then we can start applying for reimbursements as we complete projects. So, just to kind of give you a timeline, there's not a date timeline I can give you right now, but we have until the first part of January to complete any temporary work, and then we have 18 months from the disaster to complete permanent work, with some exceptions, there's some waivers and things if something really runs long. So, just wanted to kind of let you know that it is time-consuming. We do expect to have some reimbursement from TIDM. What that is, we will know as we go on, but we're working as hard as we can to turn over every rock to get that funding back. Again, we have submitted, and I think I told you this last time, FEMA is in review of all of our Category B expenses, which is all of our protective measures from the first, basically, six weeks. So, they're looking at those, they're kind of picking through those for eligibility. Once they put their stamp on it, then that will go ahead and go to TIDM, and so sooner than later, we'll be able to start requesting reimbursement on some of the things like overtime and supplies we had to buy for EOC, and additional labor, equipment use, those kind of things. So, that is already done, and it's not done, it's done to FEMA's standard, so when FEMA gets through reviewing that and we get to TIDM, then we'll start working through the reconciliation in detail on that. So, that is a near-term project. So, just kind of wanted to update you, let you know kind of where we are, that we are working on this every day, and we do, we are really feeling like we have good support. And so, our internal team, we have several members, we meet weekly, so then we meet with FEMA weekly, so it's been, it's been a learning experience for sure, and I feel like we have the support we need to get there. It's just going to take a little time. So, anybody have any questions on financial report or?
No, I just have a comment. And a lot of questions that I get out there in the community relates to this stuff, questions about FEMA, questions about reimbursement. I think, especially during this recovery period, at the beginning of our meetings, our chamber is full of people, and that's who needs to hear the information. And I would like, I'm requesting to put the financial report at the beginning of the meeting, earlier in the meeting, and not at the end, if we can do that.
That's a good point, because I get asked about, especially about parks right now, that seems to be a hot question about the cost of, put Louise Hayes Park back as best we can, you know, and the new things we want to do, so.
And one of the things we have to provide to FEMA is cost to put it back like it was, and then any cost of mitigation. So, if we're going to mitigate to make it, I guess, more out of flood areas, or if we're going to improve the areas, so we really have kind of a three-cost basis for every project that we're doing, if we're going to mitigate it in any way. So, that's a big part of the process, and part of the reason it takes a little while, because putting it back like it was, we can go get some quotes and go through procurement process and do that, but there's some things we have to do to satisfy FEMA, mitigation is one of those, so.
Yeah. I just think it's important for the people who attend these meetings to hear this financial information.
And we will have more.
Sitting out on all the fun.
Unless there's a significant reason not to, let's, that's really a little closer.
You can look at revamping the agenda and make it, make some of the information stuff more upfront.
Thank you, yeah.
You can give visitors forum.
He's just foot-fuckers.
Yes.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Barrance?
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Julie.
Thanks for all you're doing.
There's no need to go into executive session, so, do we have any items for future?
That's coming, right, in November?
Yes, yeah.
Coming. Any other items for future agendas?
I'll just make a comment on one that Dalton and I have been working on. We've had some roadblocks with it, but probably a while ago, we started working on the Purple Heart designation, and we ran into a couple of obstacles with, nobody knew who the right liaison was to talk about with the Purple Heart designation. So, Dalton has continued to march on that, and we're still talking about it, and it's something that would be very beneficial to the city of Kerrville, mostly with our high veteran population. I brought it up on time, and it has not been forgotten, so thank you, Dalton, for keeping on.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything other? Anything else? All right. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:20.